Is there something we should do?
He's working on it.
Sing maybe.
I can sing to Phil. Oh, well. All right. I think we are, we are ready to go. So I will call the meeting to work. This is the work session of the Board of Education Greeley Evans School District Six. It is just after four o'clock on October, September 10th, 2022. And I'll call the meeting to work. Ms. Lemon, will you give us a roll call vote?
Director Bentley. Director Mash.
Present.
Director Norwood.
Present.
Director Pappas.
Present.
Director Sullivan.
Present.
Five board members present.
Thank you. Ms. Mash is excused tonight. She has a Greeley Central Band Competition. Her daughter's in Greeley Central Band. So she's there cheering on Greeley Central wherever there is. And we heard of board member comments and reports. So Ms. Sullivan, why don't you lead us off?
Well, mine's short and sweet. I haven't, well, I haven't been able to make it to anything. I've had a lot of doctor's appointments. So I'm kind of trying to get past that part then been in contact with the school. Just try to get some stuff set up.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's all I got for you.
All right. Mr. Bentley?
Yeah, we did a couple of things. I'm going to go backwards just because that's where I'm at. On October 5th, we got to accept a check with Chevron at Twicken. They gave us $50,000 check. So we kind of made a rush over there and, and got to do pictures and, and visit everybody. So that was really great of them and fun to be at. I think the day before, we went to Prairie Heights and had a school visit. Watched their, what's, what's acronym? Project Based Learning or something, right?
Semit, P D M.
Right? And seeing how that's all going. And it seemed like the kids were really fond and, and pretty, pretty excited about it. It was kind of, it was really fun to listen to and get their perspective from. Feel like we did a bazillion things, but. Other than that, the United Way Community Leaders Lunch, that was fun. Was that, that's before, right? Yeah, that was a good, and then. I think that's it. I'm kind of busy keeping up with it. I don't think I even made everything either.
It's hard, hard to keep up with.
Yeah, a lot.
Although again, it's wonderful to be, feel like we're back to normal and doing what we, what we do and able to get into schools and for one reason or another. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Bentley?
I don't remember.
All right. Thanks, sir. Mr. Norwood?
I'm about like Ms. Sullivan. I've been buried with work, haven't had a chance to do much. Did get out to the Centennial Family Night. I forget when it was. Days run together. Had a chance to walk around and meet the families and meet the staff. And the only other exciting thing I did was went to Alice Cooper in concert last Tuesday night. So see him before he goes. That's, that's about it.
Greeley connection there, distortions.
That's true.
Some of the, some of the stuff.
If you've never seen him, I got to tell you, he puts on, it's, it's quite the theatrical show.
Yeah, lots again going, going on. I'll get my, get my comments real quick. United Way Lunch, that was wonderful. Great to see Rod Smith speak, but also to recognize Janine Trosswell, who's meant so much to not only that organization, but to our community. So we're all sad to see Janine leave, excited about Melanie taking over though. And it looks like the United Way is doing, doing well. And we thank you for the invitation, Dr. Pilch. And thank you for serving on that, that board. They do so many good things in this community. Prairie Heights, again, wonderful to, to see what, what's being accomplished there and to hear from, from those students. And I like the way that they, they had just those students come and present to us and let us ask questions and what, what's happening in that school and how it's going. And then to see the, what's happening in the classrooms as well was, was fun. And then Chevron having, is it Katie? Is that her name, Philch, that's?
Carrie, Carrie Baird.
I always want to call her.
Carrie Baird.
She just, from Chevron, she, she's in Denver and just seemingly loves our, our district and loves, loves coming here. And she is always so kind and gracious when, when she comes and gracious to bring a $50,000 check. And so we thank Chevron and love that, that partnership. Personally, I've, I've been at a lot of, it seems like sporting events and concerts. Greeley West Cross Country Meets. And, and then this was Concert Week, both for Greeley Central and for, for Greeley West. And Greeley West got to show off the new, new auditorium this, this week. And that was, this last week, that was wonderful to see. And then, then finished everything off with the Greeley Central Greeley West Football Game. So congratulations to, to Greeley West for pulling, pulling that one out. And you know, better luck next year. Our condolences to, we're a divided household, I think everybody knows. I have one son at West and one at, one at Central. So for my Central son and to all the other Wildcats, best wishes next year. So I think that's, that's all I have. It's been, been a busy stretch. Ms. Bass?
Thank you. So I'm making several comments tonight, partially just to review for the board some important information that we discussed this fall. Additionally, I don't know that anybody's watching this work session, but if you are a community member and intending to apply for the vacant position on the board, I think it's important that you have some information prior to that. So at the board meeting on August 8th, this board discussed school visits with Dr. Pilch. Board members gave input on the content of the school visits as well as times and days that worked for the visits. Knowing that all members except me are employed, days and times for school visits were planned and scheduled based on this input. Additionally, it was requested that students be involved in the school visit presentations as much as possible. Based on this discussion, a schedule of visits was presented to the board on August 22nd. At this meeting, board directors were also given the list of our assigned schools and a document highlighting the role of a board director as a school liaison. During this discussion on August 22nd, there was concern expressed over the amount of time involved with attending multiple events at multiple schools. This was acknowledged and addressed, knowing that while we can't possibly attend every event, especially if you have children at schools as well, intentional effort should be made to attend school visits and other events as possible. Dr. Pilch offered to provide a spreadsheet of school events for each board member, specifically the assigned schools. The document has been provided to us and I want to thank you for that. That's been a really great tool. These are the school visits since we were given the schedule on August 22nd. Based on the feedback from the board on August 8th, principals intentionally planned visits to include students and visits were scheduled at times to accommodate board directors. As a common courtesy to the school administration, district administration and other board members, it is expected that we respond to our calendar invites. In September, on September 6th, we had a school visit to Martinez, September 16th, Billy Martinez, September 16th, Scott Elementary, October 4th, Prairie Heights Middle School. And then additionally, as stated in broad board protocols, board members are encouraged to attend community events. These are special events that we've been invited to since August 22nd, and I think this is probably a limited list. Greeley Central Parade, Jackson Elementary School Bike Giveaway, Greeley Dream Team Annual Breakfast, Evans Heritage Day, Madison Beam Topping, Martinez Beam Topping, and United Way Community Leaders Lunch. So again, I'm addressing this tonight because as board members, we are expected to engage and participate as often as possible. One intent of board comments at work sessions is to share the good work that is happening at our schools and in our community. And while we are all busy, we are a collective group representing the Board of Education. So again, if you are a community member considering applying for the vacant board position, I highly encourage you to take these expectations seriously. We are responsible for more than attending board meetings twice a month. Prior to each board meeting, we receive documents to review so that we are prepared for the Monday meeting. We are prepared to make motions. We are prepared to ask questions. We are prepared to give comments and ask for any clarifications. We am prepared to make informed decisions. Additionally, by reviewing the agenda and documents, each board member has the opportunity to reach out to the superintendent and other board members with questions and/or concerns prior to the board meeting. One example is the legislative update that Mr. Fall has provided for us today. Another example is the items listed for approval in the consent, a consent agenda for every board meeting. I encourage you to do your research, reach out to other board members, Ms. Lemon and Dr. Pilch, to get information as it is related to being an effective board member. Also want to address the behavior in the boardroom. Being called liars, frauds, child abusers, racist, being judged, mocked, belittled have become the norm for this board. This happens in the boardroom through email communication and on social media. All of this is allowed because we are elected public officials. However, in my personal opinion, this does not transfer to other people attending our school board meetings. The account in the Tribune article yesterday matches my conversations with several people who were at the last board meeting and those who have attended meetings since August of 2021. The feeling of being harassed and intimidated is prevalent. One speaker at the last meeting, not quoted in the paper, was frightened and asked for a police escort to her car. People who want to support the work of the district do not feel safe in attending meetings. The discomfort of listening to audience members making comments throughout the meeting, the overall disrespectful behavior is a concern. Our representatives from the Student Council of Reps are scheduling their dates to present at board meetings. As the board liaison, I had to caution them that they should be prepared for disrupt, disrespectful behaviors. This is not okay. I admire your tenacity, Michael. You continue to repeat that this board is committed to providing a safe environment where all members of the school community are treated with dignity and respect. While I have no expectation that some attendees, speakers will change behaviors, I do expect that we work hard to find a solution to this problem. Acknowledging that some of the actions contributing to the overall feeling of being unsafe happened after the last meeting in the boardroom and in the lobby. Dr. Pilch, I respectfully request that when the public meeting is adjourned, our safety and security team clear the room and the lobby immediately. And I call action to all of us to be aware of situations before, during, and after the meeting and stand up to behaviors that are adding to this unsafe environment. We are better than this. Our community, our staff, our students, our families, our presenters deserve the right to be treated with dignity and respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bass. We are now to upcoming events and calendar review. So if you will pull that calendar out and you'll see what's, what's on our, what we have scheduled for the future. So there are a couple of things just to draw your attention to. This week, the Business Partner Appreciation Breakfast. That's at the Double Tree at 7:30 on Thursday morning. And then Friday morning, we have a school visit at, at Northridge. And that's always, always a fun visit when we get to go to Northridge. Then next week, we have candidate orientation. So tonight, we will declare a vacancy and we'll begin, well, is that 10 days from, two weeks from now, sorry. We'll have a board work session. And have candidate orientation in that, in our work session. So this time in two weeks, we'll be doing our candidate orientation. Then we'll have our business meeting. And then that week, we'll have the Beam Topping at Meeker. So I mean, is that our last Beam Topping for a while? I mean, not that we're complaining.
Yes.
But I mean, it's great to have Bean Topping, so I just.
There will be another at Meeker eventually. Did you just say Meeker?
Yeah, this one, well, I said.
Oh, no, you'll have CTE yet, and then we'll have Madison.
Yeah.
Coming down the road. Yeah. I'm sorry. We, I'm, we were having some technical difficulties. I'm sorry, I was not paying attention.
Oh, sorry.
Texting with Teresa.
Meeker, Meeker Elementary Beam Topping. And then we'll have CTE.
Yes.
I was just trying to get them, get them all straight.
Yes.
It's exciting, again, exciting to see.
We already did Madison. We forgot to mention Madison. We did them.
Was that, was that in the last two weeks?
Yes. Yeah, Madison and Martinez.
Not in the last two weeks.
No, but in this month.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I thought we, well, we did Martinez though in the last two weeks.
Yeah.
And we didn't mention Martinez.
So I think we are mostly there. So Kent?
It is hard to keep them all straight, Mr. Henson. We appreciate it.
Meekers, I don't have the date from the.
Meeker and CTE.
Meeker and then CTE. It'll be cold when we do CTE, so.
So October 27th, we have Meeker.
Yes, that's right.
It's always fun. Then Museum Night for Fred Chardis, the next.
Can you clarify what that one is all about?
This is something that Fred Chardis does. They do this maybe two or three times a year where they have Museum Night. And they're, that is a chance for their students to present the projects that they've, they've been working on. So they, they do these projects throughout the, throughout the semester and then they present those to the community. And it's, it's really a fun event to, to go see and to see what the students there are doing. It's our, one of our schools of innovation, so they, they get a little bit more, more flexibility. And it's funny to see the things they come up with.
Projects, right?
Projects. It's a little bit like going to a science fair, if, if you've ever been to a science fair. But it's not, it's not necessarily geared around science. It could be any number of things that they've been, been working on. Sometimes they're, they're, they can be very elaborate, you know, as, as they get to the seventh and eighth grade, those guys do some really, really cool stuff. So remember saying anything after?
No, I, you know, it's if you think kind of showcase of, of projects and all their students will be there, their staff will be there. It's a lot of parents, most of the parents come. It's, it's a cool event.
Thank you.
Then November 1st, we have N K Hyman. That again is a school visit that's always great. And not that the other school, but, or aren't, but it is always great to go to Hyman. Word candidate interviews, we have also on the first and the second. If we need to on the second, we'll, we'll try to get most of those scheduled on the first. If we have more than five candidates, we'll move to the second. And, and we'll stop right there. I mean, that gives it, that gets us through, through the next, next little bit. But just want to draw your attention to some of those things so that you highlight those on your calendar and can make plans to, to attend if possible. Anything else that we have on our calendar? We're not too far behind, but we do need to make up some, some time here. But we want to now move to our procedure regarding the filling of a board vacancy. Philch, I want you to take this one and I imagine Mr. Fall is going to join us.
Thank you, President Matthews. I'll just, as a quick reminder, y'all may remember that we had actually talked about doing this in executive session. And then as we further reviewed it, we said, you know, there's nothing here that can't be shared publicly in terms of legal advice or legal information. So Mr. Fall has, does have a confidential memo for you about the, the procedures and really what's required by law. But he and I just want to walk you through what you can expect and, and part of what your responsibilities will be throughout the selection of, of the new board member.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch and members of the board. So I have provided you with a memorandum that kind of is a little bit more of an explanation of this process. And I did share this with you in an email. I, I had just a misunderstanding that there, this would be shared with you in E Week and I didn't realize there was no E Week that went out to you last week. So if you do have any. Oh, we did?
Yeah.
Did this go in E Week? Oh, it did? Okay, okay. So I'm, I'm happy to hear that. And then I provided you with kind of a one-page document that's really just kind of, that I was planning to walk you through that. And so I just want to say that as we know, under Colorado law, a school director office shall be deemed vacant upon the occurrence of any one of the following events prior to the expiration of the term of office. Under Colorado law, 1D, if the person who is duly elected or appointed is or becomes during the term of office a non-resident of the school district in which the person was elected, that position shall be declared vacant. And so we know that Board Director Pepper Mueller moved out of district at the end of September. She now lives in Boulder, from what I understand. And so she is now a non-resident of the district and so her seat has become vacant. So what you will need to do and under Colorado law, upon the occurrence of that event at the next board meeting, which would be today, you as board members need to declare a vacancy by resolution. A resolution is included in your agenda and that is something that you will need to adopt later during the board meeting. Once that vacancy has been declared, you have 60 days as board members to appoint somebody, appoint a candidate to fill that vacancy. If you are unable to appoint a candidate to fill that vacancy within 60 days, under Colorado law, the authority then would go to the board president to fill that vacancy. So President Matthews has statutory authority to fill the vacancy if the board is unable to reach a decision on a candidate. So as far as our process is concerned. Give me just a second here. So after you declare a vacancy, we'll be preparing a vacancy notice that we'll provide to the public. In that vacancy notice, it's going to contain application materials that individuals will need to fill out. And then we have determined that all application materials should be due by October 26th. And so anybody who completes their application by October 26th will be considered to fill that vacancy. I do want to point out that as far as what goes into the application materials, that's not required by law. We have a lot of discretion. There's local control in terms of how we want to fill vacancies. But I do want to point out that when you are conducting interviews, if that's a direction that you want to go, and I advise that that's a direction that you should go, that should be done in an open meeting. You can have an executive session to conduct interviews with candidates. The reason there is that filling a board vacancy is not one of the exceptions for having an executive session. Also, when you are selecting a candidate, you will need to do that in an open meeting. And you would go through your ordinary motions practice of any other agenda item. So there would need to be a motion followed by a second, followed by a discussion, which would then lead to a vote. If you decide that you do not want to select that candidate, if there is a majority of nays, for example, then you would just move on to the next candidate and so forth until somebody is available to fill that vacancy. Does that all make sense? Okay.
If I could, Mr. Fall, just back up a minute, just as a reminder that October 24th, so our next work session, we, we will be dedicated to the orientation for the board candidates. So there won't be a traditional work session at that meeting so that we can do that orientation with them. And then application materials are due two days after that.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. And then we have kind of tentatively picked November 1st and November 2nd as the days to interview potential candidates. Again, candidate interviews are not required by law. That's not something you have to do. You could just simply look through the application materials and make your decision based on those application materials. It is advisable though, it gives you an opportunity to get to know the candidates. And again, you cannot do that during executive session, but you can hold it during a special session. You're not taking any action during that meeting. You're simply just conducting interviews with potential candidates to fill that vacancy.
Mr. Fall, so my understanding from Ms. Lemon, if you can clarify for me, that week of October 25th, after, or October 24th, materials are due on the 26th? And then we'll get materials out to the, the copies of the applications out to each Board of Education member prior to the weekend. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So you'll have those to review prior to coming into that interview on November 1st?
And then after, after the candidate interviews on November 14th, that should be the time when you are looking to select somebody to fill that vacancy. Again, you need to follow your ordinary practice for board action. Needs to be held in an open meeting. It needs to be an agenda item approved by a motion. You're not allowed to select a candidate in an executive session. Again, the reasoning is that an executive session does not include filling a vacancy as a reason for entering into executive session. And I also want to point out that you cannot select candidates or vote on candidates by secret ballot. Again, the reasoning is that Colorado doesn't include an exception for voting by secret ballot. That's really only for board president and vice president. That's really the only statutory exception that you have for using secret ballots. So that needs to be made open to the public. And then assuming that you are able to select somebody during that November 14th board meeting, on November 16th, we would have an oath of office for the appointed candidate at that time. And then you would have a new member in your board. And hopefully that individual could then quickly get up to speed with the board processes and be available for the next meeting to continue doing all the work that you're doing. So that's just essentially kind of some guideposts and some dates regarding the board vacancy process. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Fall, one other piece, it would be our, our greatest hope that the new board director would be able to attend the Colorado Association of School Boards Conference that first week of December. As they will have, have been sworn in by then. So those dates are November 30th, December 1st and 2nd.
So we're going to interview and vote, interview and vote, interview and vote? Or we're going to interview in one vote at the end? Or we're mode, make motions at the end after all the interviews?
Yeah, pardon me if I didn't make that clear. So on November 1st and 2nd, those are just interviews. And so you won't be.
The meeting?
It'll be during a special session or a work session. So you won't be required to make any action during that time. You're just going to be interviewing candidates. And it wouldn't be until the following meeting that you would have, be taking board action.
So at the interviews, we plan to hold those in our Board of Education room. And so you all will be at the dais, the candidates will be at a table out front. We do, just to clarify again, we will do a brief debrief that day, but we won't, we won't take any action or make any motions as we're in a, a special meeting, not a regular board meeting. So then at our next regular board meeting on the 14th is when we will actually be able to take motions to appoint the new board director. And it's my understanding Ms. Sullivan will be out on medical leave, but is hopeful that she will be able to zoom in for that meeting for that vote.
And I know you said this, but the interviews are open to the public in the boardroom?
That's right.
We would ask that candidates not come and observe other candidates' interviews. They're going to have to be on their honor for that, to do that if they choose to. But you know, it would put some candidates at an advantage to hear other candidates' comments earlier in the interview process. So we would encourage candidates wait to attend until their interview time. And those will be live streamed or recorded, at least they will be recorded. And so people would be able to view them later if they wanted to see all of the interviews.
Any other questions? I think it's a pretty clear process. Thank you, Mr. Fall. And I think Dr. Pilch.
I'll just share, I think President Matthews, just to clarify for the rest of the board, that Mr. Matthews, Ms. Pappas and I worked on the application process and the questions that are in that application. And then we also worked on the interview questions that are very similar to what we have used in the past when we've had to fill a board vacancy. So the, the night of the interviews will actually be assigned. You each will be assigned interview questions or you'll pick interview questions from the predetermined questions. And then each candidate will be asked all of the same questions to, just, to ensure a, a fair and equitable process for each candidate.
So each, each candidate, just to clarify, is asked the same question?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we have to do that.
So how does it look the night of the vote then? Is it just one person makes a motion and we vote on those? Or do we vote on every candidate? Or how does this, how does it look, I guess?
Yeah, so you would just select one candidate at a time.
But you would not vote on each candidate?
Right.
Vote, tell someone's elected, right?
Correct.
Similar to the president and vice president, you nominate somebody seconds? And then there's a vote, right?
Right.
So the first candidate who gets a majority of the board is your new board member. If you don't have a second, then you move on. You reopen up nominations if you don't get a second on a nomination.
Or if you don't get more than three votes?
Correct.
Four votes? Ben, any questions, guys?
And if you need any other additional clarification, please feel free to reach out.
Sad to be doing this, missing Ms. Mueller already. Saw her Saturday afternoon. She was at a play here in Greeley. Made it up, so.
I do feel compelled, Mr. Matthews, to just say that, you know, it's not ideal for Ms. Sullivan that she, she can't be present for that night of the vote. We really don't have the flexibility to do this in another way because of the timeline that's required by law and, and that the vote has to occur in a regular board meeting. by law, and, and that the vote has to occur in a regular board meeting. So I, we're going to make it work. We wanted to make sure she could be a part of those interviews.
You'll be up for it, yeah?
Surgeons don't really work with our schedules, do they?
No.
Surgeons don't really work with our schedules, do they?
No.
Can I say something? I have a sink. I apologize that night.
We'll cover for you. Any other questions, comments, guys? All right. Again, thank you, Mr. Fall. Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Now moving on to CASB legislative resolution discussion.
I'll let you.
And you'll get a different packet from Mr. Fall for this. But, Dr. Pilch, I'll give it to you.
Well, it's that time of year where CASB has issued their, their support or not support for the resolutions that have come forward to the Colorado Association of School Boards for possible endorsement for this legislative season. And so Mr. Fall will walk you through those. The intent tonight is really to hear your feedback and input. Mrs. Mash is actually our delegate who will actually vote on the resolutions at the Fall Delegate Assembly here later in October. So Mr. Fall is scheduling a time to follow up with Ms. Mash to share your feedback from tonight, to help give her guidance on that.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch, members of the board. So yes, as Dr. Pilch mentioned, upcoming in two weeks, it looks like the Delegate Assembly will meet through the Colorado Association of School Boards. There are 178 delegates, and Ms. Natalie Mash is our designated representative from District 6. These are really what the Colorado Association of School Boards will be advocating for at the upcoming General Assembly election. These aren't bills that are put on the ballot yet. These aren't, this is just really kind of the direction that CASB wishes to go, and kind of in terms of what they're intending to advocate for. And so I did share with you this document. And the link document there is the actual resolutions themselves. But what I provided for you is more of a summary. That includes CASB's recommendation, if there is one, as well as my recommendation for kind of what direction the board should go with these resolutions. Certainly, I'm open to hearing your suggestions or comments on these resolutions. And there are, I believe, 27 of them, 31 of them. So we'll try to move rather quickly. I will mention that a lot of different school districts are the ones that are proposing these resolutions. So a lot of them really are inapplicable to our needs, but they are helpful to kind of look at because there could be implications or impacts if these were to become bills that were to eventually become laws. So starting with Resolution Number 1, this resolution's called Accountability and Accreditation System Reform Interim Committee. So we know that under House Bill 211294, there was an audit of the K-12 Systems Accountability and Accreditation System. That audit has been complete, and now CASB is recommending to form an interim committee to look at the audit, to determine kind of next steps for the Accountability and Accreditation System across the state. CASB did bring this with a favorable recommendation. I too think it would be helpful to have an interim committee review the audit to determine next best steps for the Accountability and Accreditation System. Any questions on that? Okay. And so for the second resolution, this has passed the School Finance Act 14 days after the spring revenue forecast. You have probably seen this before in the past. This is something that comes up every year. There is an eye towards passing the School Finance Act as soon as possible. We know that the General Assembly usually sits on their hands and passes the School Finance Act really towards the end of the legislative session. Unfortunately, what, what ends up happening with the School Finance Act is a lot of special interest groups end up tacking on provisions in the School Finance Act, and it causes a lot of complications in terms of the general intent. It should be a one-issue bill that ends up coming with a lot of things tied to it. I also know that Ms. Sponsler and her department would certainly appreciate the School Finance Act to be passed sooner because it certainly helps with budgeting for the next year. We will see if this is something that the General Assembly is ever able to do. But CASB does bring this with a favorable recommendation, and I also recommend that we support this.
Guys, if you, if you remember, you know, we get this large budget packet, and we don't get a lot of time even to, to process that or read that. And that is partly because we don't get, we don't get numbers. And Ms. Sponsler, when do we generally get numbers? Like in late May?
It's usually early May that we get numbers, and then we get that information to you all at the end of May.
Yeah. You get it in early, you don't get it till early May, and then you create a budget for us by late May, and then we approve that. And we, we have to approve, we have to approve that by June 30th, right?
Sure.
So we would support that.
Number 3, School District Residential Impact Fees. So I'll just read this resolution. CASB urges the General Assembly to amend the Public School Finance Act to allow school districts to implement impact fees or other similar development charges or fees to fund, construct, maintain, or manage capital construction projects or other facilities. CASB brings this with a favorable recommendation, and it's my suggestion that we maintain a position of neutral on this bill. We know that we do have a bond measure and MLO already in place, and there are already a number of methods we have to support the funding, construction or maintenance of capital construction projects. And so it may not be beneficial to ask our voters for additional impact fees or things of that nature, just kind of given the general climate that we're seeing right now. So that's just kind of why I would recommend a position of neutral on this. Number 4, Restore Full Pupil, Per-Pupil Funding. This resolution is related to the Budget Stabilization Factor. We know that the Budget Stabilization Factor is really a tool used by the General Assembly to not fulfill its obligation under Amendment 23 to fully fund public education. So generally, they come out with their budget, and then they use the Budget Stabilization Factor to fund other agencies in the state. And so public education is never fully funded under Colorado law as the obligation for the General Assembly is to do. And so really, this resolution is, just has an eye towards getting rid of or putting the Budget Stabilization Factor back down to zero so that public education can be fully funded. CASB brings this forward with a favorable recommendation, and I also recommend that District 6 supports this.
Mr. Fall, I assume there's not much chance of that passing, though. You're right?
I, I believe that we've seen something like this every single year. We have seen a downtrend in the Budget Stabilization Factor, which is, is really good, but it's unlikely that, that'll happen at least this year. Number 5, Funding Flexibility for Staff Recruitment and Retainment of Mill Levy Overrides. So what this, what CASB is trying to do here is raise the amounts on Mill Levy overrides to what we are currently constitutionally permitted to do in terms of how much money we are to ask our voters when it comes to Mill Levy overrides. You know, and this would certainly be beneficial particularly for smaller districts, small rural districts that are having trouble funding their schools and their districts. But really, in my opinion, the onus should be falling back on the state to fully fund public education. We need to stop having the state requiring local districts to fully fund public education. This should be an obligation of the state. And so that's why I recommend a position of neutral on this, even though CASB does have a favorable recommendation. For Resolution Number 6, Continue the Rural Funding Band-Aid. And so we know that there are legislative initiatives like House Bill 151321, Senate Bill 17267, and ballot measures Prop EE. And there has been funding, code funding for rural districts that don't receive enough funding. We know that these bills and these initiatives are really important to ensure that those school districts are getting enough funding. This certainly doesn't benefit District 6 in any way, but Weld County does sit in a place surrounded by many rural districts that do. And I think that really it's beneficial to the community as a whole that we ensure that these rural districts are getting the funding that they deserve. And that's why CASB has a favorable recommendation, and I also recommend that District 6 supports Resolution Number 7, Referral for Ballot Initiative 63. You may or may not know about what Ballot Initiative 63. They failed to collect enough signatures to get this on the statewide ballot, but this would cause a change to Tabor, and it would allow additional revenue collected by 1/3 of 1% of all federal taxable income of every individual to be deposited in the state education fund. This is certainly something that could benefit public education funding significantly if it were included on a ballot and it were passed. Unfortunately, it failed this year, but with a legislative referral, perhaps it could be put back on the ballot next year. And this is something that could certainly benefit Colorado school districts as a whole. CASB gives us a favorable recommendation, and I also recommend that District 6 supports this. Resolution Number 8, Student Achievement: E-Rate and Category 2 Funding. We know that District 6 already receives funding for the E-Rate program for school broadband connectivity to include efforts for students lacking reliable internet connections. But it would be beneficial to see an expansion in this Category 2 funding to include hardware and support for essential cybersecurity services. As we continue to engage students through technology, cybersecurity is very important to kind of keep track of, and we certainly need all the funding that we can get to support the technology that we're using so we can avoid any threats from cyber attacks. CASB gives us a favorable recommendation, and I also recommend that we support this. Resolution Number 9, Student Achievement. This is related to mental health support. It's CASB's goal here to support the adoption of policies and legislation recognizing the need in providing funding for more mental health support for students, teachers, and staff. Certainly, I think that this would be beneficial to always have additional supports for our students and staff when it comes to mental health resources. CASB gives us a favorable recommendation. I also recommend that we support this. I do want to point out, you know, at what cost are we funding these mental health support services? Where would we be taking money from in order to support these programs? But regardless, I think it's certainly always beneficial to support these efforts. Resolution Number 10, School Finance: Fully Fund Public Education. I won't spend too much time here. This resolution really aligns with Resolution Number 4, which we previously discussed regarding fully funding public education and ridding the state of the budget stabilization factor. CASB gives us a favorable recommendation, and I also recommend that we support this. The next resolutions are all related to local governance. And so we see Resolution Number 11, Resolution Protecting Local Control of PPR From State Initiative Grants Requiring Matching Funds. And so this resolution is somewhat unclear, but it purports to protect the constitutional local rights that local authority of school districts from requiring school districts to either match grants or to fund mandates implemented by the General Assembly. It's really unclear what they are addressing, but certainly this school district that proposed this resolution is having some concerns about funding a lot of these unfunded mandates. And so maybe with some more information, we would support this. But at this time, CASB has taken no position, and I also recommend that we stay neutral.
But that's primarily because of the language of this specific bill?
Yes.
I understand you.
And the ambiguity of it.
Yeah, right.
So I, you know, I think if it becomes legislation, then we would monitor it more closely.
Right.
And see what it really means. We too don't like unfunded mandates, but...
Correct.
It's a little confusing, especially with the match grants piece.
Resolution Number 12 is very similar to Resolution Number 11. This was recommended by the same school district, Lewis Palmer, Number 38. And so this one is protecting the constitutional local rights of school districts from requiring districts to provide specific instruction and follow instructional text or content provided by the state. Again, it's really unclear what this resolution is addressing and what specific instruction they're hoping to avoid providing. CASB does not provide a position on this, and I also recommend we stay neutral until we get some more information. The next resolutions are all related to finance. Number 13 is fairly interesting, Updates of Special Education Medicaid Reimbursement. And so I will read the resolution to you. CASB supports efforts to create a cost-sharing mechanism between and among state agencies for expenses required to deliver special education services to students. Under Colorado and federal law, some agencies and programs should be responsible for funding special education services. What often ends up happening, though, is that school districts ultimately become responsible for funding those programs. It can be quite expensive to do this, and it would certainly benefit our students with disabilities to have additional funding so that we can fully support students with disabilities, perhaps from Medicaid or other agencies. This resolution also includes a dispute mechanism, dispute resolution mechanism for when an agency who should be responsible for funding these services is not doing so. And so CASB brings a favorable recommendation, and I also recommend that District 6 supports Resolution Number 14, Fully Fund Student Life Skills Services. And so life skills students are generally defined as those students who have a combination of disabilities that require extensive communication and/or physical and mobility supports in order to meaningfully participate in the academic state setting. Colorado school districts are really obligated and required to allocate funds intended for general education students to offset the unfunded portion of service that life skills students require. We know that this is, is neither equitable nor sustainable. And so it would be beneficial if the state of Colorado would step up to support our most vulnerable students with disabilities. CASB brings a favorable recommendation, and I also recommend that District 6 supports this. Resolution Number 15, Funding for the Pathways and Technology Early College High School, also known as PTech. We know that District 6 is one of 20 established programs in the state of Colorado that has a PTech program. This offers workplace learning opportunities and an associate's degree pathway. An improved funding mechanism would certainly benefit District 6, who would benefit other school districts across the state to provide these programs to students who want to go this direction. And a better funding mechanism could certainly open up more opportunities for students in our district who want to participate in this pathway. We know we've seen a lot of success in this pathway, in this program, and it would certainly be beneficial to have a improved funding mechanism for it.
Why is CASB neutral on that? Is there a guess?
It, it's possible that this just came late, and they haven't had an opportunity to kind of fully talk through kind of what or how this would be funded. And so they just didn't have a position on their resolution booklet. But regardless, I would recommend that we support this.
All the remaining resolutions are all, they did not take a stand on, so I would guess you're right. It was late.
Right.
Yeah.
Resolution Number 16, Individuals with Disabilities Act. This is really, so we know that federal law requires schools and school districts to meet students, the needs of students with disabilities, and it offers current federal funding of approximately 16 to 17% of the actual cost. I think that it is now time, and CASB also agrees, that it's time to increase federal funding to the 40% standard set by the initial legislation. We're reimbursed approximately 17 cents for every dollar the federal government requires we spend on education under the IDEA. And so increasing that funding from the federal government would certainly benefit school districts as a whole. So again, we can support our most vulnerable students with disabilities. CASB has not taken a position, but I recommend that we support this resolution. Resolution Number 17, This resolution aims to provide resources for schools and districts that are low performing, respecting their local control authority by allowing them to collaborate and partner with their communities to organically create local solutions and measurements of effectiveness. It really is unclear what this resolution is addressing. It's unclear how we would engage with community partners, who would be funding these supports to support low-performing districts. CASB has not taken a position on this resolution, and I also recommend that we stay neutral. And again, I just want to point out... And again, I just want to point out that a lot of these kind of later resolutions are really more district-specific, that they are proposing to CASB as a whole, and they might not necessarily relate to the needs of District 6, which kind of leads me to Resolutions 18 and 19. These are both from Boulder Valley School District. So number 18, school finance, charter waiving, MLO and bond revenues. Under this resolution, CASB supports legislation that requires charter schools seeking authorization in a school district with declining enrollment to waive any school district mil levy or bond revenues. As we know, we have an MLO, if we have declining enrollment, what this resolution would do, if it became a bill and were passed, there could be no new charter schools that could enter into our district that would receive that MLO funding if there was a decline in enrollment. And so, you know, I'm not sure if this would really impact the development of future charters in District 6, or what impact it would have. CASB has not taken a position on this, and I also recommend that we stay neutral on this resolution. Same thing with Resolution number 19, also submitted by Boulder Valley School District. Again, I'll read this resolution to you. CASB supports legislation that provides that if a district is evaluated by CDE to be in the top four tiers of the district performance framework, the State Board of Education is required to justify ordering a new school that would divert the resources necessary to support said school if the district is in declining enrollment and already adopted a budget to support its students. Again, I'm not sure if this is really related to District 6. We would certainly monitor any bills that are related to this, and we would come with a more strong position during the actual legislative session. CASB has not maintained a position, and I also recommend that we stay neutral on this.
So off-topic, but is Boulder Valley experiencing declining enrollment?
Yes.
They must be.
Significant.
Significant.
Many of the schools in the metro area are. Brighton is still growing, St. Brain is still growing, work, of course, still growing.
Resolution number 20, again, also submitted by Boulder Valley School District. You can see that this is what the resolution states. And what this resolution does, though, is it would allow the right to a third appeal if the Board of Education requires a district to open a new school if there is a decline in enrollment. The reason that I recommend that we support this is I always support additional local control or the rights of appeals to school districts. I think that anything that gives more power back to school districts, when CDE forces us to make decisions, is inherently a good thing. And so despite CASB not having a position on this, I would certainly recommend we support Resolution 21, school finance, financial penalties under the Claire Davis Act. We know that the Claire Davis Act has a limited waiver of governmental immunity when schools fail to prevent violent acts, known violent acts to third parties. The financial penalties can be significant, and they can extend to our employees depending on the circumstances. This financial incentive doesn't necessarily protect students. We all know that we can certainly take the safety and security of students very seriously. The Claire Davis Act is something we certainly abide by and follow, but it's unclear if financial penalties are an appropriate way to incentivize school districts to protect the health and safety of their students. CASB does not have a recommended position on this, but I recommend that District 6 supports this resolution. And then the last one under school finance, this is Resolution 22, school finance, update the school finance act to provide more equity among school districts. I would certainly recommend that there are changes to the school finance act. We know that oftentimes, local districts have to rely on their local taxpayers to fully fund their education. We know that this creates great inequities across the state. When you see some schools are the haves and some school districts are the have-nots, and it would certainly be beneficial to provide more equity across the state. CASB does not have a recommended position, but I do recommend that District 6 supports this resolution. The next resolutions are all related to student academic growth and achievement. Resolution 23, stop the federal mandate of summative testing with the reauthorization of ESU. So this is more or less related to the No Child Left Behind Act. ESU is due to be reauthorized in the next few years since it was authorized in 2015. Under this resolution, consideration should be given to eliminate the requirement for high-stakes federal summative testing. And then under this resolution, formative assessments given a few times over the year with immediate feedback should be encouraged. I think it's always beneficial to avoid kind of these summative testings, especially when it comes from the federal government. CASB doesn't have a recommended position on this, but I do recommend that we support Resolution 24, state or share public higher education journal and database access, database access of PK through 12. And this is related to those journals and databases that a lot of schools and school districts have. This resolution would aim to allow school districts to share access to these databases. Certainly, these come at a high cost, but I think it would be somewhat challenging to enter into MOUs with other school districts in terms of how to fund or how to provide access to students who are using these databases. CASB doesn't have a recommended position, and I also recommend we stay neutral on this Resolution number 25, student achievement, healthy schools for all. Under this resolution, CASB supports the Healthy School Meals for All ballot initiative on the November 22 Colorado statewide ballot. CASB didn't come up with the resolution, but I think, as we know, that District 6 does support this, as evidenced by all the great work that Danielle Bach and her team have done. And Miss Spencer, I should say. Resolution number 26, school achievement, reform the teacher evaluation process. I think that there's always room for improvement when it comes to the teacher evaluation process, and it would benefit and improve teaching methods and outcomes. Right now, the teacher evaluation process can be a bit challenging, and it would be better to have a little bit more guidance and it'd be a little bit more grounded in terms of how these evaluations are conducted. And so there's always room for improvement, and that's why I would recommend that we support this resolution.
Do we know who put that forward?
That was by Pooter School District.
Yeah. Okay.
And then the last resolutions, I'll move rather quickly through. Number 27, capture of traffic violators. We've seen this pass at least by a bill. CASB hasn't taken a position on this resolution. I also recommend we stay neutral. It would certainly benefit the health and safety of students to have these stop-arm cameras for potential violators who buzz by stopped buses when students are getting on and off buses. But really, in my opinion, it's unclear how much additional time, resources, and communication will be required to work with local law enforcement agencies to effectively ensure this law is enforced. I think it could certainly be a challenge. I'm not sure if Mr. Gates has an opinion one way or another about this, but I would just recommend that we stay neutral on this resolution. Resolution number 28, climate change action. We've seen this every year, at least since I've been here, and just CASB hasn't come out with a position on this, and I recommend we stay neutral. It's unclear what specifically CASB has in mind and how this might impact District 6 and our community, which does work in natural resources a lot. And so any climate change bills could have significant and wide-sweeping impacts for how we do business here. Resolutions 29, 30, and 31 were all submitted by Calhan RJ1 School District. And so on Monday, October 3, 2022, the CASB Board of Directors submitted an email in opposition to all three of these resolutions. We don't necessarily have a position on this. It looks like there is some controversy going on between Calhan RJ1 and the CASB Board of Directors. And so, you know, I certainly, we are a proud member of the Colorado Association of School Boards, and generally speaking, I think we should align with the Board of Directors in response to the allegations contained in these resolutions. But really, I would say more information is needed before we should be getting ourselves in the middle of the controversy here. And that's really all I have to say about those last three resolutions. But if you do have any questions about it, I can certainly try to answer them.
Are they asking for the resignation of all or just certain ones?
Yeah, so 30 is calling for resignation of all current CASB Board of Director officers.
Didn't they just have a director change, too?
And they have, yeah.
Or whatever they're called, the executive?
So with that, we are at 5:02, but I'm happy to kind of answer any questions or comments you have about any of these resolutions. And if not, I can provide you additional information down the road if you do have any questions.
I have a question for one. Could you clarify what the Claire Davis Act is? I'm not really familiar with it, but it seems like this is something we'd want to, I personally would be more on the other side of this one. It seems like keeping the kids, the teacher blatantly disregards a thing, that could potentially change the kids' lives.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And I think that that's a completely fair point. So we have the Colorado Governmental Immunity Act, which generally protects school districts or public agencies from lawsuits brought in tort. And so what the Claire Davis Act is, it's a limited waiver of that governmental immunity for any potential, or for any violent acts by third parties that occur in our schools. This bill was passed because there was a young girl named Claire Davis who was killed by this young man. All the red flags were there, and essentially, what they found is the school district didn't do enough to address this individual who ultimately killed this girl. And so they passed the Claire Davis Act in response to that. And as part of the Claire Davis Act, they will, anybody who is harmed due to the violent act of third parties can sue school districts for failing in their duty to protect students. So I mean, you certainly raise a really good point, and it's just that financial penalty might not necessarily incentivize people to protect the health and safety of students. It can be a significant cost, but I certainly, I certainly hear you, and that makes total sense.
Is it, there's criminal penalties, like applicable to stuff like that, or what, like if it's not a financial penalty, what's the option for repercussion if there wasn't a similar instance?
So I think there certainly could be criminal penalties associated with it. I think the challenge is that the Claire Davis Act does open the door to individual employee liability. And, you know, sometimes these situations can be so, there's so much gray area in terms of what a school could do or should have done, given the circumstances. We know that we are conducting things like threat assessments for students that could be potentially harmful to others. But yeah, I know that there are probably some criminal penalties associated with this, but the financial penalties are really the big thing against kind of individual employees.
Well, and the school district.
And the school district.
Yeah.
So, and I would be happy to, when I work with Ms. Mash, to recommend maybe more neutral position on this, if that's a direction that you think would be more appropriate.
So, Mr. Fall, if I'm correct, what Claire Davis Act does is it carves out an area where governmental immunity does not apply, and thereby, our insurance carrier may also not choose to cover us in if it were to be deemed that the, an employee missed something and a student, you know, was injured significantly or killed. Is that correct? And I'm looking at Megan to around insurance. I know this has been one of the questions, is that for school districts, is that an individual district could be on the hook for millions of dollars and not have the revenue to pay that because of the Claire Davis Act, the district's insurance might not cover that.
It definitely increases the cost of your insurance.
Greater, yeah. But I'm with Mr. Fall and comfortable staying neutral on it.
It would have to be like something they were, you know, to be an egregious act.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Not like a loophole for a lawsuit, right?
It is.
It is a loophole. It's a loophole. And I will say this, I mean, I think, I think we've gone back and forth on do we remain neutral or support on this. This has come forward now for several years in a row since Claire Davis passed. I don't, I don't think it's going to become legislation, but we'll see.
Right. But I think for individual employee liability, yeah, it would have to be fairly egregious for that individual to be found personally liable and would have to pay the costs for that, so. But you raise a great point, Mr. Bentley.
Any other questions? Yes? Twenty-seven, I kind of follow, I like that one a little bit, too, to mention safety. I don't know, I don't know about it, but it probably offers a lot of problems, too, headaches, but nothing pisses me off more than seeing somebody not deal to one of those stop signs.
So we don't currently have this camera capability? Is that correct? So I think that's the biggest issue probably for us, is the financial, you know, implication of having to put cameras on each of those arms. But I agree with you, there's no reason to run past a school bus.
Maybe it'd be like a dash cam on the, you know, maybe one that just records or something. How many school buses do we have?
Our newer buses have the one that stops when they're going out.
We do on the newer buses?
It initiates a cam.
There you go.
Just for that outside the bus.
But, I mean, it would be great if we were able to fully fund this, and there was a way to work with kind of our local law enforcement agencies so that, you know, it wouldn't be a burden to either side. But no, you're right.
I think that's one we could come back and talk with Chief Gates and Mr. Henson both about, and see what the implications are, to see if we want to change our position to support on that one.
What if our buses are, the new ones have them, and we're rolling them out?
Mm-hmm.
New buses every salt, anyway, so maybe that'll just solve itself.
Those are great points.
Are there others that you all have questions about, or wonders, worries, would like us to consider a shift on?
I just wonder, the teacher evaluation, when was the last time it was revised?
Senate Bill 191.
Yeah, what is that?
I'm not sure.
I don't remember, it's a while.
It's a long while.
Okay.
And, you know, is this Pooter also?
Yes.
Yeah. I think that they've brought this forward before. I think, I think there's several organizations that are saying that it's worthy to start to take a look at the teacher evaluation system, along with the accreditation system. So when you look at the, number one, the accountability and accreditation system reform, interim committee, the question I would have would be, what is the role of that interim committee as they're looking at possible changes to accreditation around, also making recommendations around teacher evaluation? Because it would seem that there would be some, well, there is now, that there would be some overlap between the two.
Thank you.
Is there any more detail on 28 at all? Is it just?
This is something CASB's put forward every year.
Yeah, so I'll read the resolution to you. It's CASB supports swift action by the Colorado General Assembly and federal government on climate change to protect today's students and provide school districts with the resources needed to counteract the adverse effects of climate change while implementing practices to slow global warming, and to assist those districts dependent on tax revenue from the fossil fuel industry to transition away from those revenue sources.
Kind of like a big deal for Will County.
Right.
I mean, I, the way that that read, I have one that opposes category, you know, obviously, that's my way of living, too, so a little biased, but, you know, we just accepted a $50,000 check for Chevron. We don't think they're going to be fond of that, so.
Right. Yeah, and
I don't know of any adverse effects of climate change in Colorado, either, you know, outside the drought, but.
And perhaps this is one where we should be taking a more strong position on, just kind of given the community that we live in.
Who put this forward, first of all?
CASB does.
CASB does.
And they do it every year.
Yeah.
And it's never gotten any legs.
Yeah.
But if it did get legs... But if it did get legs, so kind of how this works, so they vote for, at the delegate assembly, they vote for what will go forward as a statewide boards of education, will go forward as supported. That does not necessarily mean it will become legislation.
Right.
So then the next step is legislation, which, of course, we would work closely with our lobbyists. If something like this became legislation, we'd work really closely with our lobbyists to see what the implications are here at the, you know, at the local level.
This seems for us, too, like that could come with some unintended consequences and mandates.
Financially.
Financially, just like, you know, what would, what does that mean?
Right.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, though.
No, you're fine. Do we ever actually oppose any then, or do we just do the neutral stance? Because not on our end.
And these are really my recommendations, so we certainly could.
So that's definitely one I would think we would put an oppose on.
How does it work in the, when they meet with Natalie? She votes for us, or, right?
Yeah, she's one of many votes, yeah.
So the 178 or something, is it? So is there an option to vote neutral or not to sustain or to abstain?
I'd have to check, but I think you can abstain from voting on any of these.
If we're neutral, that's what that means.
Yeah, we don't vote.
Any other questions?
I can get some more information on the Claire Davis Act, if that would be helpful.
Yeah, I just.
There will probably be legislation that goes forward on that. There often is. And so we will need to take a stance with our lobbyists at some point.
Yeah, it sounds like it could be really complicated, so.
And this piece is really important to CASB. Where it becomes really important to us is what, you know, what becomes proposed legislation, and how do we lobby for or against that proposed legislation?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll make some adjustments and base some feedback, and we'll meet with Ms. Mash.
Thank you both. Moving right along. We're running a little behind at the moment, so we need to make up some time here if we want dinner. Proposed CASB resolutions. Dr. Pilch, send this back to, maybe back to Mr. Fall, I don't know.
I think we are, so it's, I think that got put in there twice. Amy? I'm looking at the agenda. CASB legislative resolution discussion, and then proposed CASB resolution, so I think what your five-minute schedule would look like.
Beautiful. All right. So then we are to community engagement. We'll just.
So let me clarify. I think that the first was the presentation from Nate, the second was that conversation we just had, was the other half of that. And so if you are comfortable moving on from that, then I think we can move on.
Okay. I think we're comfortable, so not hearing that we're not. Community engagement, then, community engagement, things we need to be aware of. Again, it's things like United Way Lunch, great place for us to be, then also engaging with the community this Thursday, this business partner appreciation at Doubletree at 7:30. Again, this is, these are our business partners, and we certainly, certainly do need to have partners and work in collaboration with the other members of our community, and so that's another important one for us. Anything else that anybody needs to bring up on the way of community engagement?
We did just get an invite to the Habitat for Humanity Hope Springs Ground Blessing on October 25. We all just signed an invitation to that as well.
I thought that was just me.
Well, we, I know, Michael, you are a special, but no, we all did.
Pay attention to which calendar that's coming on.
Dr. Datter, do you know if this PLTW showcase that is occurring at Twinton Academy on Friday, the 14th, between 8:30 and 1:30? It looks like we were all invited to just stop by at any time during that time, but is that something that school board members would be invited to as well if they were interested in coming by? Do we know?
I haven't had that conversation.
Okay, well, we'll watch for that.
But I'm sure that we can, I'll look into that, and I'll get back to you, so you can invite the board.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
And I will say that Habitat blessing dedication is, that's a big deal for Evans and for Habitat, so that's a good one. It's 10 o'clock on the 25th, but there are a lot of different entities that are making that happen, and so that's one to make if we can make. Great way to engage. Any other questions? You guys on community engagement? All right, well, we can debrief the work session and move on to dinner. Mr. Norwood, thanks a lot.
Lot of information. I'm like fuzzy-eyed here, but it's really valuable getting all the input on the legislation. Great questions, great answers, a lot to think about.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Pappas?
I always appreciate hearing about the legislation. I, it's, when you don't pay attention to it all the time, it's just something that is important for us to look at together, and thank you, Nate, for that. Appreciate it.
Yeah, same. This is a lot of moving parts, so thanks for trying to keep us all, it's a hard job for you. It's a lot of info, but excited for the fall and the winter, too.
Hello?
Yeah, busy schedule, but I do actually want to say, Kyle, I appreciate the questions you brought up for a lot of those that I hadn't been thinking of, because there were so many things going on on this document, so thank you, because you kind of red flagged a few things for me to kind of pay more attention to.
Yeah, great, great job. Thank you, Dr. Pilch, thank you, Mr. Fall, thanks for getting that information to us. This is a blessing to have Mr. Fall to do that for us. That was not always, always the case, and so it's great to have him presenting this information to us. Just as Dr. Pilch said, this is CASB, so there are things that they put forward every year that never go anywhere. The real point to pay attention to is things that are actual bills that are proposed, or Senate bills and House bills, and how we would lobby for and against those. Because, you know, things on here, we would love to see that just, you know, passing a school finance act in 14 days after spring revenue forecast, that'd be great to see, but my faith that that ever happening as a actual legislative item, pretty close to nil. Anyway, thank you, guys, and let's see what else. I think we have one more. No, that's a debrief. We're jerked, and we will get, we'll get some dinner.